Okay, we are now moving to a public comment. Does anyone in the audience who would like to address the school committee? If so, just a name for the record, please. Once again, one last time, if not, close this portion of the meeting. We'll move on to communications from the superintendent. Any communications?
I do not have any communication.
All right. And now we'll move on to student report. Don't worry, I can never figure it out either, so.
Yeah.
I have a technology degree, so I can never figure it out.
Okay, so I'm going to be doing the LHS student report. We are going to be having our club fair on Wednesday. As per music, Ignition Show Choir has gotten started. Marching band starts competitive in a few weeks. Sports are up and started and most teams are doing pretty well. Homecoming is the weekend of the 18th. We're offering PSATs on October 12th and the SATs on October 5th. Open house will be on September 24th and progress reports will be soon after on September 30th. It is currently suicide prevention month, so in the spirit of it, on Thursdays, we are wearing teal and purple. Romano is also doing different announcements regarding the topic. Stump is also soon going to bring the Student Bill of Rights to vote. And that seems to be all for now.
And then at CTI, we're getting started. We have some new teachers and staff. We have a new guidance counselor namely. And 13 students are doing a co-op. And additionally, CTI has been awarded just under $100,000 for improvements. And that is all.
Good news. Plus, Loomis the beat will be good.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Plus, our coaches could be recognized by that. That's good news. And the band is, some of the band members will be playing. So you have to win the division of the Rose Bowl. So in a week. So all I can say is eat that next week.
All right, superintendent?
Thank you. So some of my report has already been given. Thank you for the high school report. So we've completed three weeks of school. It's been moving quickly. Last week was our first five-day week. There were many tired students at the end of the week for sure. So I thank them for continuing to come. Attendance matters and coming to school every day, even if you're tired, is important. So thank you for that. The cabinet and I have been out to schools as much as possible, offering support. And it's been wonderful to see our students in routine, engaged in learning. Our teachers and our staff working diligently to meet the needs of all learners and implementing very high-quality instruction. So that has been very nice to see. We are encouraging families to attend their students' open houses. I have been providing the schedules in my Sunday newsletter. There are some open houses that are occurring this week at Francis Drake, Fallbrook, LCE and Lemonster Academy and Northwest. So if your child attends those schools, please get out. It's a great opportunity to meet our wonderful staff, connect with other families, and to learn about resources that the school has to offer to both students and families. In upcoming weeks, there is the Lowell High Open House that is, I'm sorry. The Lemonster High. I don't know how I said it, why I said it. The Lemonster High Open House. CTEI as well. And then our pre-street kindergarten program is happening in October, the open house, as well as our pre-K sites. So if families can keep looking at the weekly newsletter, you will see that the dates are listed there continuously. This Wednesday, September 18th, we are holding our first early release. So this allows our teachers to receive professional development. And I'm just making parents aware to plan accordingly. Each school has a different early dismissal time based on the school start time. And if you go to your child's school website, you'll see what that early dismissal time is. And it's the 18th this Wednesday. And we thank you in advance for understanding as we continue to invest in our teachers' growth and professional development. Coach Devon Gates, our high school football coach, has been selected as a New England Patriot High School Coach of the Week. And there will be a presentation, including a $1,000 donation on behalf of the Kraft family and New England Patriot Charitable Foundation in honor of our coach towards our athletics program. The presentation will be featured on Patriots All-Access on Friday night on WBC. So please watch for that. And finally, we had a great turnout at our Johnny Appleseed Festival on Saturday. It was great to see students, staff, caregivers, all out supporting Lemonster and our public schools. So thanks to everyone who participated in that. It was a gorgeous day and it was just a great community event. And with that, we can continue on with the agenda.
Introduction of Megan Cardia and ELPAC, LPEC presentation. Renee?
So I'm going to have Renee come up and introduce the LPEC. Megan is not here to do that tonight.
Eve, can you turn on some lights, please? I feel like I'm at a spa. Baltic music. It is, but it's still peaceful.
I'm going to fall asleep on this statue.
Whoa, okay.
Turn on the lights.
Better. Now it just looks like we're in a morgue or something. So either on or off. There you go. Well, listen, what are people watching at home? You wonder what's going on over here. All right, go ahead.
You ready? So Megan is not here tonight, but I'm here. But I do have exciting news. It only took us about six years, but tonight, our school committee can be broadcasted in six different languages.
Wow, that is really exciting.
So I am going to ask that it really does take us to talk clearly in the microphone.
Well, at least me.
And to the microphone, because it does do the translation that way. So if we can make sure that we are, as you can see, I'm trying to talk slower than I normally do. And Kyle has put this, it's clear. And it's on the website at lemonsterpublicschoolsaps.org. It's if you go into the, enter school committee, under district, and then school committee, the directions are going to be right there posted. So we will make sure that we get that out. But it's going to be in six different languages, our top six. So they get to choose their language.
And the directions are in different languages, correct?
Yes, it'll be as our normal translation for that. So we're excited. So we're going to talk slow and clear and make sure that they can hear us, because that's a huge thing around the translation. So there you go, Dean. Six years later, we got it, family.
Talk to text where some words might come out differently.
So that's why you've got to be careful speaking that microphone.
I will talk slowly.
There you go. Okay. So tonight, I'm here to, you've seen, some of you have seen Tatiana, but she is the president of our LPEC, which is our English Language Parent Advisory Committee. And she's here just to kind of reintroduce herself, tell us a little brief thing. And then probably the upcoming event, I can hand those out to them, so if you want me to. And then just introduce who else is on her little committee. I'm going to turn it over to Tatiana.
Good evening, school committee.
Hi.
Hi. Buenas noches. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me, Superintendent Desmond. I appreciate the invitation to come and speak to all of you again. Some probably new faces. Tatiana Lara Melendez. I am, as Renee had mentioned, the LPEC president for our district for the last five years now. With the English Learners Parent Advisory Council, we have part of our committee. I have Alessandra Silva as my assistant chair. She's actually coaching soccer, so she wasn't able to join us tonight. We have Johani Saldana, who's our secretary. Her husband is the assistant treasurer, Juan Carlos de los Santos. Andrea Marrero, who is unfortunately bedridden for a little bit. She hurt her leg. She's our treasurer, but very much involved as well. So together, we are a combination of parents of the district, working primarily with children and families who their primary language is not English, is either Spanish or Portuguese. Our focus has been those two main languages, because that's the majority of the population that we are supporting here in our district. And it's an honor for us to volunteer our time to work with these families and students. So thank you. And basically, what we like to do throughout the whole school year is we have different family events, family LPEC meetings, where we bring information. Sometimes we bring different speakers that would be helpful to the families. And our meetings are fully done in English, Spanish, and Portuguese simultaneously. So they're immediately translated at the moment, which is great that we're now able to have the school committee meetings translated. That's amazing. So we are definitely moving forward to be more inclusive for our various language and diverse populations, which is really important for us. So this year, we have our first event, October 3rd. And we're actually uniting with the CPAC as well. So we're doing a joint event, LPEC and CPAC together, back-to-school event on October 3rd. Renee's passing out the flyers just so you have information. And we're excited to have the families come join. So usually when we do our back-to-school event, it's more of a fun activity for kids. We have different, we have different activities, board games, karaoke, face paint, that type of thing. Different activities for the kids and families. And in this time, we have the privilege of having our superintendent, Desmond, join us. So she'll have an opportunity to meet with the parents of CPAC and LPEC and connect with them in that venue. So we're looking forward to that as well. And then we also, I also have the calendar of events, just so that you're all aware. We try to do around the holidays, we try to do an event for the families as well. This year, we're doing something different. We're actually doing a potluck. A lot of families like to contribute and share their culture and share their food. So we're looking forward to that on December 5th. And we'll have that at Johnny Appleseed School. So this year, we're also doing this differently. We're actually hosting at different schools. Prior to that, we were doing it when we first started at the Lemonster Library. And then we transitioned to the Lemonster High School. And then this year, we're kind of alternating all the different schools to kind of meet the families where they're at. Because a lot of the families may not feel comfortable going to a different school that they're not familiar with. So we're hoping that this will build the trust and involvement more with LPEC. And then we have another spring event in March, March 13th. We will do that at Skyview Middle School. Our hope is to engage more middle school and high school. A lot of our families that participate in our family meetings are elementary school-age students and families. So we're hoping to expand that if possible. And then we always end the year with a family fun night. This past year, we did it at Northwest Elementary, and it was a great success. Renee always helps us. And we got an ice cream truck for everybody, and everybody got a free ice cream. And we had different activities, music, and nice little event that we were able to host for the families. And families definitely do enjoy that. So we appreciate your time in consideration to LPEC. It's really important to our students, to our families. And I also want to highlight the support from Renee, from Megan, from our superintendent, but also the parent liaisons that we have at each school. I've said this many times, they really are the bridge to us and to our families. So we appreciate their support. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do. We appreciate it.
How many, how many people would attend most of these events in an average?
So the highest-attended event is usually the back-to-school event and the end-of-year family fun night. So that can go up to 200, 300 people.
Oh, that's good.
The intermediate meetings.
People get busy.
Yes, people get busy. So I would say maybe 50, 80, depending.
It's still good.
But we have a good, good amount of families.
They like to park.
They like to party. They like the food.
Yes.
Everybody loves food.
Things go hand in hand, though.
But we, we just try to, as we've been learning and growing these years, we're trying to find, and we've done different surveys too with families, to kind of really gear, what are the topics and interests that they have, so that we can really support them in that area and just incorporate it in different ways. We want them to make, you know, feel comfortable in attending the events and also knowing what's the importance of their child's education and how they have a voice as a parent in their son or daughter's education, which is really important.
We did last year. Actually, it's not tense.
We did. We did discuss attendance and the importance of attendance, definitely.
You said there was five different angles.
For the school committee? Yes.
Six. Six.
Yeah. So it's in Spanish, Portuguese, Haitian Creole, Arabic, Urdu, and Hindi.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This might be a comment or question for newer old business, but in the context of, we talked about providing funding for events for CPAC. I don't know if we've talked about LPEC and then kind of where we landed the plane on the policy, but it might be something we want to pick up again?
Homemade presentation?
How about now? Oh, yeah. Hey, so good evening. I'm Jenny Allen. I oversee the Family Information Center. And every year, we just want to give you an update on the enrollment numbers and where we're at. You can flip to your, I think it's the fourth or fifth page in there. Just want to make sure that everybody knows that this is not our final number. We want to make sure that it's after October 1st. Our accountability specialist wants to make sure you know that. So after October 1st, we'll be able to give you a definitive number. But this is kind of where we stand right now, knowing that these numbers are going to move.
I didn't say objections. I said projections.
You just said there aren't any, because they just took whatever they have right now. That may change in October and could change in June.
I know that, I get that. But when all these numbers, as compared to last year and the year before and today, what's the project? Two, in a year or two years, is there projections? Am I, am I asking a dumb question?
No, you're not, no. So right now, I don't know if I'd be able to tell you what the actual projection would be, but we typically sit around 6,000 students. And we have for the last few years. So I would reject that it would probably be around 6,000 students moving forward.
How do we stand from last year? Well, like, are we higher than last at this time?
Right now, we're higher, but that's pretty typical, because we're still, we still have students that may have moved that haven't let us know yet. Where we're waiting for release of records to be able to let them, let them go, basically. So we're, we're kind of in a holding pattern right now.
So typically, by, say, May, I mean, we, we know how many slots there are. If we don't get students from our community, then we open up those other slots for school choice. So we're always going to have every seat full, regardless. So we may start off low or high, but that would be adjusted later on. So we're always going to have every seat filled.
I guess I must be really flat-headed. There's always projections. I mean, you see it on, you see it on TV, you see it in the papers, you see it in magazines. It was such a projected profile.
Ron, I think it's hard to say, because you don't know how many people are going to move to Lemonster tomorrow. We can have 5,000 families move to Lemonster tomorrow. It's hard to predict that.
And we only have a certain, so we only have a certain amount of space.
Right.
To be able to have those students. So we've always kind of sat around the 6,000, as the mayor has said. If we have less students than that, then we would have, we would open up more school choice spots to be able to fill those seats.
So just to maybe beat off what Ron is saying, this number does, as you were saying, seem a bit high. So maybe that's what we need to be aware of, is yeah, we want to be around 6,000, but we don't want to be incredibly overcrowded either. So we want to make sure that number, if it's, you know, if it drops off a little bit, as it does, great. But if it continues to go up, we need to be aware of that.
I think the other thing that, at least I heard like last year, is there was a lot of talk around Northwest being over or highly or near capacity. So I guess that's another question, is do we have any school that's really at high capacity at this point? Or are we okay?
So based upon looking at the school choice piece of things, is that what you're saying? Or just in general? So like, for example, North.
Building capacity.
Sure. So I can say that for Northwest, they were closed to begin the year. We didn't offer any school choice for Northwest. There are some grade, so not every other, not every school is closed. There are some grades that are closed in every school. And there are some grades that are open.
That means that Northwest was close enough to be at capacity.
Right.
Building capacity that we, we shut down.
Right.
Okay.
Go ahead, Josh.
My question is in regards to LCE. Is that something that we could open up to school choice with just one program like that? And if we did, would it benefit us? Capacity, we heard, was like 150, maybe? At 63 right now?
So LCE is open for school choice. That's something I think would probably have to be a bigger discussion to, I'm not, I'm not sure. Have to get back to you on that.
I do know, Josh, that when we instituted LCE, we were, as a school committee, clear that we were anticipating that it would grow and that we would be accepting people from out of district. And that was sort of put on hold when we didn't have the physical space. But I think, you know, back when we originally, you know, did the program, started the program, the intention was for it to increase in size and have people from out of district.
Maybe it's time to reach out to other districts to let them know we have it.
Right.
Well, plus, I would think, once, I mean, we're only in our first month here, first couple of weeks. You may have students that, after sort of admission, they may want to refer from our system into that. And that'll give you maybe some open seats in high school and then still some seats. So I'm not saying you're going to fill them all internally, but I would suspect that there'll be some referrals in the process that.
Absolutely.
Might flow that way. But yeah, it's a good thing that we have them open, because if they don't get filled there, that means if something empties here, it comes vacancy here, then we fill this vacancy. Does that answer that, Ron? It seems to be, we have so many seats.
It makes it more confusing, because.
We haven't had a study. Remember, Ron? We've had studies.
Please, don't remind me. My question is as follows. And the bad question. It's a bad question. It's a dirty question. So is our capacity defined, are our projections, is it defined by our capacity? He was saying, who was saying that Northwest was kind of close, close to the edge?
Ron, as, as part of the process to build a Fallbrook, we had to look at enrollment and look at some projections. So maybe you want to review, yeah, birthing rates, eighth grade entries from parochial. So you may want to go back and revisit that. And that may answer your question is to, but our, our projections have always been around 6,000.
Right. But as has always been 6,000, but maybe I'm the one that's.
Well, you asked for the projection. I just told you.
What happens if that 6,000 goes up? I mean, on any given day.
Well, then, that's not a projection. You asked us about projections. So we're telling you, there have been projections that have been done. And they put us at 6,000 students. Based on birthing trends, the shift from parochial schools to the eighth grade, special needs from, you know, from.
And again, I say.
Private schools.
The projections are, the projections, projections are defined by the constraints of the capacity.
Well, that's what we tried to tell you.
Oh, no, no. He gave the example of Northwest. What happens if all the other schools suddenly start getting?
We don't have a crystal ball. You asked us for projections based on data.
Projections always say.
Based on data. We gave them to you.
We let Elaine finish what she was saying.
I think we've gone, we've gone far enough.
Okay.
All you have to do is look, if you're looking for projections, open up the data that we have, that we submitted to the school building assistance folks. And there is the projections that we showed for building that new school. That's available to you and everybody else. As far as projections, they've been made for many, many years. And they always have us, for some miraculous reason, they always seem to get to that, and this is back, I don't know, eight, 10 years ago, at around 6,000. And that seems to be where we're at, plus or minus.
Exactly. And birthing trends and.
Right.
So they follow all that. And you, the state wouldn't allow us to build this new school unless we provided projections. And we did. So I would say maybe you take a look at those. All right. So go ahead.
So along with.
Anything here that jumps out?
Along with the general enrollment data, we also have some information on our special education numbers. There should be some slides in your packet and.
Very well.
Kyle may be getting those up for us, but in the meantime, so Lemonster Special Education Department is committed to our inclusive practices and continuing to build a capacity with that in our buildings. With those updates, I do want you to know, there is a new IEP document for this school year. So I like to keep everyone on their toes a little bit. Desi has mandated that we start using this by November. So like to keep everyone on their toes a little bit. Desi has mandated that we start using this by November. We're starting the school year with it. So any new IEPs that are written will be in this new format. One thing that we're pretty excited about with this is that it really takes into account student voice. So it's a very student driven process, as it always has been, and the form now reflects that. So if you start hearing anything about a new IEP, it's a new form. We're learning it with our families. So please bear with us. We do have our Special Education Administration all over the district, in every building, in every program, keeping an eye on things. And along those lines, we do have some district wide programs. So we have our ABA substantially separate programs located in all three early childhood buildings. Francis Drake, Johnny Appleseed, Skyview, and at the high school. Our Student Support Therapeutic Center is at Fallbrook, Sammaset, and the high school. Developmental Life Skills, Johnny Appleseed, Sammaset, and High School. As I can attest from my time there, the high school does get everything. And that's part of what makes it such a great place to work. And then we have additional services throughout the district. Much like with the numbers that Jenny presented on the enrollment data, we have our students with IEPs. This is where we're starting the year. We know early childhood will grow because there's a rolling admissions based on when students turn three years old. And then the numbers fluctuate throughout the year based on eligibility meetings that are held. In addition to the students that we have in our buildings, at this time, we have 30 students who are doing homeschooling and have IEPs, 81 out of district, and 16 who are receiving services only at the preschool level. So coming in for speech services, that sort of thing. Lastly, we have the disability categories in the district. We've traditionally been highest with the specific learning disabilities. I do want you to note on that last graph that learning disability and specific LDs is the same category. So if you combine those, that still is the leading category of eligibility. The way this report pulled out, it separated those two. Other than that, autism and health are the second and third eligibility categories that we see at the highest rate.
Questions?
Medical is tough. Do you make it easier? I'm just wondering if our, our homeschool population strictly families that, strictly families that probably would have done home choice anyway, just based on their own want or need? Or is it maybe this program isn't really appropriate for my child because there's medical needs involved and?
So typically, when there's a medical need involved, our families want to work with the district and find a placement that can support the medical need. The homeschool that's listed here, our families typically, right, there's always going to be unique circumstances, but typically families who would have homeschooled anyway for their own personal choices. And the student they're homeschooling happens to be eligible for special education services as well.
Ron?
I did a very unspecific calculation. Please correct me. It says, it says, it's, it's written here, total of IEPs, 1,445, and I did a quick calculation. It comes out to 24%.
I believe off the top of my head, it was roughly 23% and change. Yeah.
As compared to the rest of the state, how is that?
Slightly high over the state. I couldn't tell you nationwide, slightly higher than the state average.
That was a good question, Ron. But the new form, if somebody's already on IEP, could they request using the new form if they wanted to redo it?
My recommendation would be if someone was simply looking to get onto the new form, that they go through a team meeting process because it is, there are different requirements for it. And so the information from the old meeting wouldn't necessarily translate into that new form.
Okay, that's what I was saying. So if somebody wanted to do, just have to go through that process.
Correct.
Okay.
It's a right 1,445 of that would be.
I know. By the end of the year, we'll get there. Everyone will be on the new form, right?
Just asking.
Just a clarifying question. What, what specifically about this new form kind of makes it more accessible?
Could you clarify for me what you mean by accessible?
Um, so to my understanding, this should make it easier for students to meet their needs and like get IEPs and stuff, correct?
So in order for a student to qualify for an IEP, there's a whole eligibility process that needs to be gone through. That process hasn't changed. With the new form, it's about focusing on the student voice and vision for where they want to go with their education, but they still need to first qualify.
So it's more so just emphasizing the student and making sure they have more of a hand in the process?
I would say that's a fair way to look at it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Question?
I just want to go back to the regular enrollment here. It, I mean, we're at 832 for CTE and 1,078 for Leamester High. And there's a lot of that because of the, yeah, well, that and, and the fact that they can go back and forth, they can get their, go to Leamester High and then go to CTE. And there's a crossover on it because it's a comprehensive school.
I'm not sure what your question is. Sorry.
What your question is either.
So you, you can, you can, you can be part of Leamester High, still, still be part of CTEI, take courses, vice versa, right? You can do both. Okay. Some of that has to be the ability, I mean, that has to be an attraction to be able to do both of that. So students, when I went here, couldn't do that. So that limited how many students were there at the high school, but there seems to be a growing number of students at, at CTEI now because of that option, right?
So looking at these numbers, the freshman class seems to be highest. So when we're coding students for LHS versus CTEI, the freshmen who are in that exploratory program will get coded into the CTEI building. And so at the end of first semester, they may choose to stay. They may choose to come back to the traditional academic side. So those numbers may change. In the past, we've sometimes reported those numbers together as the high school campus. And so now we're trying to break them apart and really take a look at exactly what you're speaking to right now and where the students are gaining their education. Is it more in the CTEI side or in the academic side?
But they have a choice to do both at the same time.
It depends, right? So there are eligibility requirements for CTEI. So if they've met those requirements and they choose to stay, they would be coded as CTEI students. If you miss out on some of that, you may be able to still join a shop if there's room in the shop, but you might not earn that certificate from the shop at the end because you haven't met those.
I'm saying is it's, it's, it's a value added approach. There is some value added to this. This gives a student more options than they did. So maybe as, as a committee, as we get down the road, we should look at maybe more options. And so if we don't have any room, say if Health Alliance can provide a health program that's tied into CTEI, we might not need to add extra space or maybe there's a machine, banner mold can take on the tooling and some of those other things. And we develop those other partnerships to grow the program. Because it seems to be that's the growing pot of schools across America. We're just lucky and fortunate to have a comprehensive school where you can do both. Not, there aren't many. That's just something that's a real plus for our community. So it's nothing we have to do today, but I think down the road, we can start looking at other options, which may actually increase the amount of students that are sort of looking at both options. But that's quite a number, 832. And then you're at 1,078. That's a big part of the high school right now is CTEI.
Wow, that's surprising with the college costs nowadays.
I know. I'm just saying.
But it's impressive.
Yeah. I mean, just, sure. All right. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Habitat Humanity application, everybody has a letter here in their packet. So that all those loose ends have been worked out. It's gone back, right? Superintendent to, back to the Habitat Humanity. It looks like they can build a house. We can build a house. They can still run their program and they will select the families in our city. So I think that meets everybody's concerns.
And do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the Habitat for Humanity project to commence.
I'll second it.
All right. Are there any other questions? If not, all in favor? And when it comes time to swing a la, a hammer or something, maybe the school committee can do a day. You know, everybody takes turns kind of working there. What are you laughing at? Well, we'll find something for everybody to do. How's that? All right. Goals and objectives. Superintendent?
Thank you. So I am handing out draft evaluation goals. I'm not looking to do much more than just inform you of what, what I'm thinking. I know that we will be having a conversation at some point about my goals for the year so that I can be evaluated. And I'm working, as you know, with a coach. I introduced the coach last school committee meeting. And the coach and I have worked on this draft and I just wanted to get it out to you in knowing that at, at some point relatively soon, you will all be talking with me about goals for evaluation moving forward. So this is just a draft and I just put it here for your review. And again, this certainly can change as we move through the process, but I just wanted to be timely and get something out to you in September. Thank you.
Questions? Be straightforward. Thank you, Superintendent. Approve the minutes, September 3rd. Can you believe that? We're already to the 16th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes. The regular school, December 3rd.
Eileen, second by Melissa. Are there any questions or comments, errors, omissions? You have an error? You'd like to self-report? You didn't. Well. So noted. It will come out of your bonus for first quarter. Oh, no. All right. All, any other questions or comments? No errors, omissions? That one's been corrected. All in favor? Those opposed? Thank you very much. Policy subcommittees?
Yes, we did meet tonight and I just want to give sort of a little update on everything. So for the Interscholactic Athletic, we had a robust discussion. And we have, you know, felt that we needed some input from our athletic director, MIAA, and our attorney before making any final recommendations. I think, you know, there was, like I said, lots of discussion, but we need a little bit more input to make sure that we are following, you know, sort of all the laws and rules and regulations that we should be. So that was that one. We did accept the updated, update all the policies that MAS C is adding the, Acts of 2022, Chapter 117, Race to Include Traits Historically Associated with Race, including but not limited to hair texture, hair type, hair length, and protective hairstyles. So we are going to be adding that to the student discipline policy, the student dress, nondiscrimination, including harassment and retaliation, nondiscrimination, including harassment. And we, I don't know why it's twice. One's AC, one's ACR. The equal opportunity employment, professional staff hiring, equal educational opportunities. And we did not include it in the school choice. That is before us today, JFBB, because it has nothing to do with when we're voting to accept school choice, has nothing to do with any.
You have to follow up policies anyway.
So we all voted for that. So I would like to take first reading of that by the school committee.
Sir, you would be the first? Would there be a second? There was a second? All right. Any questions, comments on that? Everybody's got a chance to see it. All in favor? Those opposed?
That worked. We had conduct. And we are making one change where it says walkmen's radios, beepers, and cell phones. Now, some of that is a little antiquated. So we are going to just say. Electronic devices and communication devices. But otherwise, everything else is going to remain the same. So this would be the first reading as well. For that policy, do you want to do all the rest of them in bulk or you want me to do each one separately?
You mean bulk?
Well, there's a couple of them that we're going to be approving.
Just the one at the time.
So if we can, with that correction, do the first reading. I make a motion.
I second.
All right. Student dress code. We are just adding to the list of any violent, suggested violent, violence on the apparel. But otherwise, we're keeping that the same, just adding that one.
Again. The gang color.
And the gang colors. Sorry. Thank you. So that'll be the first reading for that one. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
ACA.
All right. Questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Ron?
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor? Those opposed?
The nondiscrimination policy and the nondiscrimination on the basis of sex. We just had added the MAS C piece. We didn't add anything else, correct? So we'd like to approve file AC and ACA.
Okay. It's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's lots of seconds. All right. Melissa on second. All in favor? Those opposed?
Professional staff hiring was just the MAS C one, which we already kind of voted on in bulk. And then, right, to disability. Sorry. Thank you. Correct. I would like to make those changes. The first reading for professional staff hiring. Second.
All right. So motion is second. Any other questions, comments? Get your second.
And then for the last one, school choice, JFBB, we're keeping the same. So we're going to.
All right. So motions and a second. All in favor? Same, keeping it all the same.
And that will finish it. We had a very productive and.
So we never put the, the pencil to the paper on the issue that CTEI on when they're doing sort of work for the school, then city, then nonprofit, and then we'd never like put that to. So maybe the next meeting.
That would be great. Yep.
I think you keep it real simple, right?
Yep.
That's obvious to, it doesn't get all convoluted.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. How about finance? Did anybody spend any money? No? Thank you. We'll move on to the next. Don't know warrants today?
I didn't say any.
So it's safe to say you didn't spend any money? Recorded.
So are we, well, typically doing finance, policy alternating?
Yes. So first meeting of the month is finance, second meeting is policy.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna have a bunch of, we're gonna have a bunch of one month meetings coming up. So one meeting months.
The policy subcommittee was talking about like having a separate meeting to go over the student handbooks. And we are talking about doing that.
Still pay out. Okay. Next is a vote to nature's classroom field trip approval.
A motion to.
Did I read that correctly?
A motion to approve.
I want to hear about it. Nature's classroom again?
I love it.
In a voting mood? I wouldn't mind, really. Everybody will have to.
Well, that, we've heard it there.
Everybody will have to be up to three for roll call. All right. So we have a motion?
Can I just click?
Yes.
This is just for Sammaset. There'll be a separate one for Sammaset.
All right. So I made the motion. Second.
I'll second.
All right. Second. Okay. Josh gets the second. All in favor? Okay. Thank you. Vote on individual contracts. Do we have any of that?
Yes, we do.
You do.
We are, so usually the superintendent.
What's going on out there? This is sudden.
So this is a vote for individual contracts that we specifically discussed at our last executive session in, on September, no, August 16th. And so we have, we agreed on a increase and we've moved forward with that. So we need the committee to take a vote.
Right.
So I make a motion to approve the. So I make a motion to approve the 3% increase for the individual contracts.
I'll second it.
And second. Okay, any discussion? Good job. Good job by individual contractors. I didn't forget about the bonus. Don't worry. All right. Motion second, all in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Are we ready for the secretaries contract?
Yes. Steve Mamonia is just going to come up-
Number these up here.
Quickly to give us a brief overview of what we're voting on.
So similar to the discussion we had-
Yes.
In executive session, the secretaries did ratify the contract. So now we're coming back to a vote, what we had talked about. It was, I don't have the number in front of me, three. It was the terms stated last time.
Okay.
So I make a motion to approve the contract as noted previously.
Second.
Second by Melissa. Any questions or comments? Everybody has all this information. It's public information. All right. If not, all in favor? Signifying your manner. Okay. And then a vote on Keystone representative.
So I have-
At Keystone.
I have been asked to replace Superintendent Deacon on the Keystone Board. And so that needs to be voted on. I'll second it.
All right. Thank you, Sandy. Any other questions, comments? Not? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. New world business?
So I would like to bring up the issue of the school committee requesting an increase in our stipend. The amount of money that we had requested was not approved, as everyone probably is well aware of, by the city council. There was some confusion that it seemed like the city council thought they may have requested some information from our business manager and our superintendent, which they never received the request. And I know some counselors were sort of wanting to have some of that information. And I think for Melanie, it was really, you know, what is sustainable, you know, in our budget? And they wanted to get some feedback of that. I do think it's unfair to ask the superintendent, who we are her boss. So it's not a fair position to ask her to weigh in on that topic. I would like to, after, you know, talking to a couple of people, suggest that we resubmit something with a lesser amount.
Re-submit?
Re-re-re submit with a lesser amount. Because it seems that, you know, some folks felt that, you know, we should be happy to serve, which of course we all are, but we all are elected officials, just like the city council's elected official. The city council does also get health insurance, which is a huge bonus. That was something that we were not asking for. And they also, you know, have a stipend that they receive, which was, you know, higher than what we were originally asking for. But I suggest that we revisit it with a lesser amount. I would still want to have in the motion, if people are feeling that's what they want to do, with going forward with, you know, raises, so we don't have to go through this process over and over again, much like the city council based on the what index?
Reflecting the cost index.
Yeah. Consumer price index.
Consumer price index. So that's all set. For those of folks who don't know, school committee members had been serving, you know, for, without any compensation. 10 years ago, we were given the compensation of $2,000 for the year. And that has not changed over the last 10 years. And speaking for someone who has been on the K D for a long time, I certainly have served for 20 years without any compensation, 10 with some compensation. So clearly, this is not about money. But we were all just kind of joking. We all spent lots of money on the, all the various school raffles and things like that at the Johnny Appleseed Festival. We go to a lot of events and contribute in many different ways. And we also want it to be an inclusive process. So for those with young children, I know when my kids were young, I had to, you know, pay for a babysitter in order to, you know, go to meetings and functions. We want to make this board sort of available to people in all, equitable in all circumstances. So that's sort of my philosophy behind it. So I don't know what the rest of the group feels.
I'm not going to ask who anybody has talked to, but those that were willing to maybe revisit it for a lower amount without saying name, did they say what they might be open, what that person might be open to?
I didn't really get a sense of that. I think they, you know, there's probably lots of conversations, you know, going on, but-
Just trying to like, it's a process, right?
Right. And I mean, I was going to suggest, like, you know, for $5,000, you know, per year, that kind of thing. That's seems, you know, there's many other school districts, you know, who are getting much more than what we requested. There are some that are getting less. And, you know, it really is, you know, based, you know, on each individual school system. The other piece that I did, you know, sort of ask is that we have more notice. Because unfortunately, I was unaware of it until late that evening. I don't always have time to read my personal email while I'm at work. So I'm using my work email. I'm working. So I wasn't able to get that until the evening. So I don't know if that, I think Josh, you were the only person who was available to go and had noticed enough to-
Bronn.
Bronn was there too. I didn't realize that. And you guys were there, so I don't know if you have any comments or thoughts about the process.
My comments overwhelmingly from the city council. I don't think anybody liked the amount, right?
Yeah.
It said 400%, 400% increase, but the language they kept using. Many of them, I don't, I don't think it was majority, but that mentioned that they would support an increase. But they also didn't think that the proposal was something that they could come back with. So they, it was, it was our petition, not theirs to change the way that they put it. So I don't know if that means we should send back a petition with a number or statement that said, you know, that says an agreeable or reasonable, whatever they feel is reasonable. I don't know. That's course of action for that. So otherwise, we go back and forth, I guess.
I guess. And maybe this is discussion. I don't know if it's appropriate or not. But Dean, as the mayor and someone who has some influence on this, what is your feeling, I would think, in having talked, and you must have spoken to some members of finance, I would think, about some of this? Do you feel there's a number that they, because it's frustrating to continue to put something forth, say, no, you're not worth it. Put something forth. No, you're not worth it. Now we're putting something forward again with no idea of a number. If you haven't spoken with anyone, is there a possibility that as the chairperson, you could advocate for, or just from feedback for them of a number? So we're not continuously going back?
Sent it down zero, saying whatever you think. We said, the original petition didn't put a number.
Right, they asked for a number.
Hey, you know, you come up with what you're comfortable, if you're come up comfortable with $2,000, $2,000. So be it. If it's three, or five, or 10, you know. And then it gets sent back, and then it gets sent back again, and then it gets sent back. And that's when we sort of came up with a number. So.
This answers the question, right?
That's all, that's the only questions I had. And then there was a referral, and I said, oh, what are you looking for? Like, well, getting school to do it. I said, comes out of the school budget. School budget costs, and that was it. So I haven't had discussion with anybody.
I tried to include everything in it, because they value it. The state committee respectfully requests with a vote of eight to zero that the Leamster City Council consider increasing their yearly compensation underlying with the other school committees in Massachusetts. The committee currently receives a yearly stipend of $2,000 and would request that amount to be increased to $10,000 to take effect after the next election cycle and to follow the consumer index of future increases. The compensation will be paid out of the school department budget.
That was the last time you sent something there. Okay.
I, I am of the mind, it's been a wrong-headed approach. It should not be between the school committee and a city council. It should be you, Mr. Mayor, who's the chair of the school, also chief of the finances, chief of this, chief of that. So it should be between you, because that's what they said at the city council.
Okay, we should say, this is a school committee. It's a committee. You put down what number, you think, I don't benefit from this? I don't lose anything from it?
You represent the school committee.
That's correct. And they asked me for my recommendation, and I gave it to them.
Well, it wasn't written down anywhere.
No, they wanted to know.
But it isn't really a recommendation. It was stating that it was coming out of our budget, which our petition had already said.
Right. If you, if you want my opinion, I wouldn't put in for $10,000. That just doesn't look good. When you add that up to eight people, that's $80,000. That's another position. And I'm not comparing the council. It's just, it's got some shock to it, right, when you hear that? I would start much lower and just tie it to the consumer price index. Nobody here does it for the money.
Right.
So let's pick a number that you can send down, saying, look, this, this covers our expenses. We don't- nobody here has a big campaign account that they can, might take money and distribute it out at some of these events. And you want to buy a ticket from everybody. It just covers the, the normal cost of whatever it is to, and I would do that. That would, that would be my recommendation. If I was speaking for all other eight people, that's what I would say. So you need to identify, what is that cost? Like, what is that amount?
And you have to go, because they wanted you, they asked, ask, ask Josh, he'll tell you the same thing.
I just told you the same. I just told you the same thing. I told everybody. That's what, that's what I would do.
But it has to be, it has to be in black and white for them.
Come up with a number that you feel comfortable. I don't know. That's you.
And it should be noted, public record, that they wanted to know why there weren't more school committee members that speak in support of it. And-
We took a vote.
So many of us already did at the previous meeting. And then the rest of us couldn't make it because no one was told.
Right. The petitioners weren't informed.
Yeah. Come on. Okay. My, so my two cents is that we, we pick a lower number, and we say, we'll, we're gonna revisit this in two years. Like, we're gonna look at it again.
I think we should tie it, I mean personally, tie it into the index. And I keep forgetting what the name of the-
Is that how theirs works?
Consumer price. I'll have to write that on.
No, is that how the city councils work?
So that way, yeah, that's how the city council gets their raises. And that way, we're not always going back and forth with them and fighting over this, that it would be something that is automatic.
Economy's good. It goes up, it's not, you don't. That's it.
You know.
Raises are tied. That's how my cost of living adjustment is in there. Economy does well, okay? If doesn't, I don't see an increase.
I mean, I see it, and I get the whole state, but the city council is responsible for all the budgets of the city.
Except for, except for, the largest one.
Well, they have to approve it, right? So in, in context, they do have to, you know, be responsible for all. My some of the comments that I heard, you know, secondhand, were a little concerning. But I do think we should just find something in the middle, find something, I would, I would say 5,000. You know, that seems like a good number. I don't, you know. I don't do this for the money. I get it that, that we deserve, you know, I, I get, giving to one group, like I, I got at the volleyball raffle, and then another student group walked by, and I'm like, well, I gotta get it for them too. And, and, you know, I saw Robyn, and she must have done it for everybody too. So it's, it's tough. And we do spend a lot of time going to events, I know. And that's time loss with families and stuff, so.
Doesn't work.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So you know, I mean, it's, I mean, it's what I do. This is like a full-time thing. So I know my cost on. What are your costs? That's what I think you need to submit to them, what you think is a fair representation. Because nobody here does it for the money. So if we're gonna say, well, we're doing it because there is some expense associated to it, what is that expense, right?
I don't think expense is the argument.
Yeah, I, obviously, I'm not like paid to be here, so, you know, my comment doesn't like necessarily mean as much. And I'm not sure if this has already been thought of, but is there any way, like, a petition could be sent in to make a gradual increase over time? That way, it doesn't feel like too sudden?
Yeah. I mean, that's certainly a possibility, I'm sure.
So I think-
Different approach.
Right. I think what we want to avoid is having to keep going back and forth to the city council. And certainly, city council members could change. You know, and it's just puts us in a potentially adversarial role with people who we want to work well with, we, you know, respect, although, you know, we were maybe disappointed with some of the comments. You know, we can certainly understand maybe the overarching decision, but I think it was some of the commentary. So we don't want to engage, you know, in that. So that would be just my response.
I would even say to be-
Just that.
I would say just 4,000 would probably be a comfortable amount, personally. I think that's something that would be considered, it's up to this, everybody else, but I think 4,000 might be a better.
I wouldn't say up to. Because if they come back and make this vote on 2,500, or yeah.
We had 2,000 now?
Yeah, yeah.
When I think of the amount of, it's splitting. It's half what our request was. It's half of what they get.
We get 12,500, I think, and 12,500.
Right. It's about half of that. And I know we're kind of throwing around, well, we spend at Johnny Appleseed and whatever. But if you total, I think I, for the first go-round, I put in a total, in over nine months, it was 155 hours, not looking at an email, not looking at any of that time. It was football games and meetings here and going to CAPS meetings and, you know, going to city council to advocate and budget season and policy and finance and equity meetings. So I think I wanted to go through, because at this point, anything would be helpful. As a person who works a lot of hours, it would be helpful. But at the same time, I want it to be equitable, that someone else is going to want to come on. And I want to value the work we do. And I'm, I walked away from that incredibly frustrated at how we were treated and undervalued, in my opinion. So I think just to say, okay, four, I don't know, maybe that will get it done. But at the same time, I think we're undervaluing the work that we do.
I agree.
I mean, I guess I would agree with Josh, around 5,000?
I split the middle of what everybody's saying.
You always get credit.
Or Greg, I'm sorry.
He got credit for, for seconding a motion too.
Mine always like the best.
So what are, what are folks thinking? I mean, we should, we'd need to take a vote.
Yeah.
Include up to language, up to, or just?
Keep it five. With the price consumer index in there.
Yeah. And when you're talking about the election, the election of, of the next election cycle, what are you talking about? Because when we first got our raise 10 years ago, it started in the middle of the year. In the middle, and you got prorated, you know, for your time, because it's for the, you know, school year. So, and are you talking about like starting January, when our new-
26.
Thing does, or you're talking about in two years? So I don't think that makes any sense to wait until 26.
I mean, you can't give yourself a raise and get it, like, the, 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 well, the city council, I mean, in the charter, and I think you can check, says within, is it, no, that's, that's filling in a vacancy. But you'd have to give yourself a raise now, and it would take effect for the people taking office the next time. You can check the charter, but that's what the city council says, or myself.
Because, yeah, because that didn't happen last time, because it was prorated, so that-
No, I think that, no, my mom sent me something.
Charter. But maybe we should just double-check the charter, just for the language. I mean, just-
I'm just, I'm just thinking that if they're hesitant on five, though, like, they're gonna be like, oh, you're gonna give it to yourself before the next election, then that probably is not gonna get approved anyways. I don't know. I mean-
It's in the charter. They wouldn't be able to do it.
Right, right, so.
And I don't, it certainly means like now, it could be like January is your new- And I don't know, it certainly means like now, it could be like January is your new, you know, term or whatever.
I mean, people, if it's, if it's not on the charter, people are gonna have to account for that during the election anyways. I mean, just like anybody.
There's nothing in the charter that I can see.
They have the chart.
You, it's a prestige. The other thing you all gotta remember...
Trust me, about the school, uh, city council, I don't know if it applies to the school committee or not.
So we'll, we'll double-check that before sending it up. But do we agree on an amount or not?
The proposal is 5,000.
The other thing you all have to remember...
Why doesn't Craig make the motion?
I know.
I did not make the motion. No, I, I can, what do we make the motion for?
Five, really, your mouth.
No, up to?
No. With the price consumer index afterwards.
All right. So we're making a motion to submit a petition to the city council to increase the stipend for the Leamester School Committee from 2,000 to 5,000 with a, an adjustment on a yearly basis to match the Consumer Price Index.
Okay.
We see that by the warrants.
Any discussion?
We're gonna go, we all, we all...
Agree.
We all need to go, and we all need to stand on this, because they're kind of sick of seeing me, so.
Yeah, I agree.
So we do need, you know, in all fairness, we need notice, appropriate notice. And I guess we should have double-checked with Mel if she thinks that's something sustainable in our budget. But you're on the spot, but...
I call it 10,000. It never received.
Right, we know that.
But if we're talking about waiting to budget next, budget period, that then obviously makes it a lot easier for me to draft it, having to prepare. I think the way this year, possibility, I can't say that right now.
And, and in other discussions, Eileen, that we've had, at least in my 31 years, we, we ran into some difficult budget times.
Yes.
When nobody felt it was, you know what? We have to stop paying ourselves, let's just put it back into the system, they need it more right now. And I think that was a longstanding tradition, even to get to $2,000, to be in that position where we could pay. So I think it's just been a billion years that it was done, and it was very competitive. At one time, if you look back to the 60s and 70s, it was very competitive to get a seat on the school committee for $0, for, for none. And all the discussions I've ever seen, it always hangs around. But, yeah, you know what, just put it back, I don't know the teacher, maybe it pays for some supplies, whatever. And that may be, and I don't know, I haven't had the discussion. I did hear a little bit of it on the TV part, and I did hear some of that, like, you know. So, and, you know, I think it was part, well, you know, they, they serve, and the part, well, dividing up the responsibilities, and who's got responsibilities, and whatever. But, so I think that was part of some of the discussion, Josh, that was going on there. So it, I think if you ease into this thing with a realistic amount, and then you get your cost of increase, uh, the cost of living increase, or maybe not, if the economy doesn't do well, you won't. Like, it'll be a moral rationale.
I think it was just a way not to have to travel.
You just have to cau, you have to have a word of caution. There's a city, I do not know if it's Malden or Methuen, where the city is up in arms about the raise that was given to the mayor and the city council. Quincy, they were really up in arms.
Yeah, it was quite conservative. This is not the same.
I, I hold on to it, but you know, if they got in, up in arms about that.
And to be honest with you, I don't care if it's next election cycle or not, but I just wanted to do that, because we started talking about it last year for this year, and then it's not, it's not gone forward. So it'll be, you know, 2020, 2030 or something by the time.
In the year 25. The man is still...
Right, so I just want to make sure that it's like going through.
All right, we spent enough time in there. All right, we have a motion, a second, any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor? All in favor?
Josh is raising his hand.
Raised his hand, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Send that on. And then, just on the New World Business, if you want to scan this in, put on your social media site or whatever. This is what we put off the bit, and it's open September 22nd. So hopefully...
Pretty.
Now, we have $10 million in there for the fields. There's a lot of interest in this, which is really good.
Oh, good.
I want to scan it in, post it somewhere, and just to show people.
Is there room for the softball field to be added at some point in the future?
There was, remember, this thing started out, actually started out 10 years ago like this, and then it...
Then it blossomed.
Blossomed, and it went this way, and now it's back to originally, actually, to where we originally started, so.
That was pretty.
I'm really...
You touch and stand on there?
I, I hope so. But a lot of this was us doing either contributions or whatever. But the main part of this, remember, was we were moving the track from Doyle, because we had people walking within 10 feet of where they'd thrown javelins, which is a liability issue.
You think?
Main.
Okay, that makes sense.
Some didn't think it was a problem, I'm like, I'm not that accurate.
Yeah.
At all.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't be trusting me because I'm the other end of it. But in any event, this is the, this is the project here, so.
Nice. It's the high school.
High school.
It's the addition to the addition to the addition.
There's nothing, there's no...
Well, we, we dealt with parking and entrances, and, you know, it's a tough site, because it's, it's a wet, a lot of clay in the soil, and lots of drainage and cut and fill. But we have a ton of interest in it, which is a good thing, yeah.
Is that area to the right of the field? I'm awful at reading maps, is that like topography sort of thing? Is it graded, or so, not really a potential of a softball field going there?
Well, the way they had it was a multi-purpose, so they could kind of shift it around, so you could use it for other uses, but this particular point class. Well, that's another thing, is we never had the opportunity to have, you know, like, have students go out and walk safely. It was more like mountain climbing in Mount Wurjuza, you know, in the dark. Yes.
Uh, yeah, just a question about the track itself. Is it gonna be rubberized, or is it just gonna be like gravel?
No, it's all rubberized.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is there lights?
Um, I think we, we put in provisions to rough in the lights. If, so we have some bit alts, if it comes in lower, then we can add them. If not, it bit alternates, so we would just run all the infrastructure underneath, and then put lots of light. I don't know if you see the lights that go up and down, but they're real amazing. And the same thing, same thing at Fournier.
Did we fix, however, the lights?
Yeah, the next night.
Anyone more picture, please?
Dark shadows, yeah, you can have, I got plenty. Anything else on the New World Business? Yes, Melissa?
So, one of the hardships I've had of late is I've taken on a new role at my day job, and getting to attend the CAPS meetings that I'm the representative on has become harder and harder. They tend to hold them at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. I've requested to see if we could do them later in the evening. And that's not gotten a lot of positive feedback. So I'm happy to stay on and attend as I can, but I'm also putting out there, if there's someone who does have the time, the ability, and the interest to take on the role, it's available.
Very.
What time are the meetings?
3 o'clock.
Oh.
They're, they're mainly school staff, so they're just doing it as part of their day or the end, so.
I would support Andy doing it.
Can you overlap? In other words, if you can't make it one other way, you know, I mean, can you do that? That way, there's, you have a better chance of getting, then you communicate with each other as to what's going on. Yeah, that way, if you can't, do you still want to do that? If you can make a meeting, you can, if not, alternate.
That's fine with me too, I can reach out to them and see if they have a preference. You know, they may just want to reach out to one person, and, you know.
Well, whatever.
But I'm happy to do it.
I, for, i- i- in terms of our part, why don't we have Melissa and then, or Sandy, and then, then Melissa's the alternate from, and if they accept that, fine, if not, then we'll deal with that.
Yeah, so we'll make Sandy...
Because you've been doing it right along.
Right.
So it would be foolish to lose all that connection and knowledge that we have, so.
Yeah, right, that's fine.
So why don't we make, I'll make a motion that Cindy will be the representative for CAPS, with Melissa being an alternate, so that way we don't have to necessarily vote, does that make sense to you?
I'll second that. Any second? Thank you. And any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Look at that moon. Been guiding over us the whole night.
I was like, that's the light reflection.
Oh, it is.
I knew I had my glasses on, I could see that. That's the, that's the, I'm gonna hit you inside the head moon.
All right, motion adjourned. All right, all in favor?
Stay here with Ron.